Introducing the crowd here. To my far right Esther Olsen-Murphy, Vic Thielbar, my far left Anne Sermon, Kevin Baum, and Laura Davies. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the vice chair and will be serving as the chair this evening. We're going to start with an announcement. Just in case anybody is here for the application of Benjamin and Sarah Anderson at 66 Newfields Road. The applicant has requested a continuance to the September 15th 2020 ZBA meeting, so we will not be hearing that case this evening. Let's see. We have then one, two, we have three applications before us this evening. We have six members present. Only five can vote. All six can participate in the question and answer, in the debate, and in the discussion regarding the case, but only five can vote. So from amongst the alternates, is there somebody who would like to vote or not vote on any particular case? Who are the alternates? Anne and Esther, Esther are you still an alternate?
Yes.
You are, okay.
We can have Anne vote because she hasn't gotten the chance to yet.
You didn't vote at all last time?
I did not.
Okay. Do you want to vote on all three or the first two or?
Just don't screw it up.
Yeah, what he said. What he said. Why don't we have Anne vote on the first two and Esther on the third? Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So we're going to begin with the application of Patricia Duval. Can everybody hear me all right? I can usually project pretty well, but I'm muzzled. Yeah, okay, good, thanks. Yeah, you should be thankful.
And that was the outcome.
What, I should be muzzled?
Yes.
Yeah, right. If I start giving a speech, he'll stop me. First up is the application of Patricia Duval for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, Density and Dimensional Regulations Residential to permit the subdivision of an existing 3.2 acre part acre parcel at 105 Brentwood Road into two lots with less than the required minimum lot area. Subject property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential zoning district, tax map parcel 60-24. This is case 20-10. Is the applicant here? Sharon, you represent.
Yes. First of all, can you hear me through this mask?
A little more volume would be helpful.
Okay. Is that a little bit better?
Yeah, I know you're soft spoken.
Okay.
I'm smiling.
I'm trying to.
Smile.
Did you shave today or not?
Did I shave? I'm not answering that question.
Inappropriate questions from the board, sheepers.
You guys should be very thankful that I have a good sense of humor.
Yeah, and don't live in that.
And may I say, it's nice to be back. I appreciate you guys, you know, coming out and doing this. This is great.
Even with that welcome, thank you.
I know, I know. I know. So anyway, my name is Sharon Summers. I'm with Donahue, Tucker, and Chindela. I'm here tonight representing Patricia Duval. With me is Patricia Duval, who is, can you hear me okay? Okay. Is Patricia Duval the owner of the property? Also with me is the surveyor of the property, Henry Boyd of Millennium Engineering. And if we are successful this evening, Henry will be taking this project onto the planning board for subdivision approval. Tonight, we are seeking relief to allow two lots to be created per the variance plan submitted. One lot is proposed to have one acre and one lot is proposed to have two acres. By the way, I may, there may be a couple of references in here that are typos. The survey actually shows that it is going to be a one and two lot subdivision. The tax map originally said that the total acreage was 3.2, so I may have in a couple of places had extra, added an extra point two, so just ignore that. The survey document is the one that governs.
And that is 3.0.
That's 3.0. That's correct. That's correct. The lot itself has approximately 720 feet of frontage, which is reflected on the survey plan, I believe. And the due diligence has been done to date on this lot to demonstrate that it is, has the capacity to have two dwellings on it. A perk test has been done. The test passed and septic and well service is possible, so that shouldn't be an issue. The driveway will need DOT approval, but we believe that there is adequate site distance. And so all of those sort of threshold matters have been taken care of, or will be taken care of. With regard to the variance criteria, the first criteria, of course, is that this variance is not contrary to the public interest. And the purpose of the, this lot size ordinance, I would maintain, is to create, in general, a sense of cohesion in terms of the various neighborhoods, so that the lots are roughly the same size, and also that they maintain some, do not fall below a minimum size. And part of the reasoning behind that, of course, is to prevent congestion on smaller lots. The creation of the lots for this proposal, for one and two acre lots, will not unduly into a market degree violate the basic objective of this ordinance, because the surrounding lots on both sides of the street contain varying lot sizes, and I think that's evident in the tax map that we submitted. And at least one of those lots that's shown on the tax map is even smaller than the proposed lots here. The smaller lot, and I believe it's across the street, is approximately one half acre. All of the surrounding properties contain single-family homes, and that's what we would be proposing here, too. The proposed lot size has not altered the fundamental character of the locality, nor does it threaten public health, safety, or welfare. As we've said, the neighborhood consists of lots of various sizes. Also, the newly created lot will have private water and septic, and is anticipated to have its own driveway. The two lots to the rear of the subject property, which is Lot 25 and 25.1, shown on the tax map, use, they enter onto Brentwood Road, so there will be no interference with those two lots in terms of any newly created driveway on the westerly side of the existing property.
I'm sorry, Sharon, could you repeat that?
Sure. So if you take a look at the tax map, it's probably the easiest way to take a look at it.
I have it in front of me. I just, I was unclear. Did you say that they?
Do or don't.
They do or don't access Brentwood?
Lot 25 and 25.1 do access Brentwood Road. They don't, they don't, is that we would create our own access off of, I believe it's the westerly side for this newly created lot, so that there wouldn't be any interference with the access that would be serving 25 and 25.1.
Just out of curiosity, where is that? Do you know where that access is? I'm just, I'm not, I'm only seeing a small wetland area, it looks like.
I do not. That may be a question that Henry might be able to answer. They just want to know where these lots come out.
I believe that the access, Patty probably can tell better, but I believe they're asking about this lot.
Right. So, yeah, it's at the end of my property.
So if you see the, I'm Henry from Millennium Engineering. So if you see where Patty's property ends on the eastern side of this, the driveway is actually hugging that her easterly boundary between the wetland area that you're showing.
A shared driveway for the two?
Yes.
On the easterly side?
Inbound toward Exeter.
Okay.
Between her Easter, if I'm understanding correctly, between her eastern property line and the wetlands that's showing on the.
That's correct.
Oh, I see. Okay. And that serves both lots?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That as well.
Kevin, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. That was not what I expected it to have it to come out, but that answers my question. Thank you.
And so I think with that, though, the status is that a, those two lots could continue to exit their property and not be interfered with in terms of any accesses to be created for the newly created lot here.
And the existing driveway that would serve the existing home is near the?
Practically in front of the home.
Practically in front of the?
It's right, yeah, it's right near the home.
Probably best to look at the larger plan. I'm sure you folks have copied the plan as well.
Doug's in here.
So you can see where the home here is far. Great to the right of the existing home, great for the road, what's for existing driveway. So Sharon's point was that the new home, driveway of the new home would be up here. Would have to meet DOT standards for a site driver, I guess, and those things, but it would be placed well away from the main road.
Okay. Yes.
Ms. Summers, if you don't mind, there is what appears to be a right-of-way to the westerly edge of the property. Can you address that? I'm sorry, we're interrupting the flow of your presentation.
No, that's all right. That's all right. There is, and I don't know precisely what that right-of-way serves, and Henry may know more about it, but I, but my view is that it's not necessarily related to this particular application.
It actually is a, it's a part of the piece of land that the town owns. So it's not a right-of-way. Others may have right-of-way, two of them. And we haven't done a full survey of the property yet, but we have done enough through existing record survey to place the property on the ground relative to the tax map, so.
Actually, I'm sorry, could you hold the microphone while you're speaking?
Sure, sure.
Can you have it on the record?
Thank you, Laura. Sorry, I forgot that.
Crazy times. I forgot to say it's nice to see everybody smile, so.
Well, that's why the town of Exeter is listed as.
So, yeah, the town of Exeter owns this piece that, if you look at the tax map, I can see why you think it's a right-of-way, because it shows a very narrow, slender piece of property, but it actually is owned by the town of Exeter, so they are notified as in a butter, certified mail, so.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, the intent would be that the access for the, both the existing lot and the newly created lot would be directly onto Brentwood. So continuing on, the next spirit and intent of the ordinance is the same as public interest, of course. Substantial justice is done. Here, using the balancing test, the applicant is going to be benefited because she has quite a large-sized lot. She doesn't have need for that entire acreage, and yet she wants to stay in her home. She feels that she would be benefited by creating a second house lot to be sold to a third party, and therefore be able to retain the balance of the property to be used in conjunction with her home. We would contend that there's no apparent harm that's going to come to any individuals. We don't know of any objections, and we've received one letter of, I wouldn't necessarily call it support, but certainly a lack of an objection. And there's the, there's no other objections that we are aware of from individuals. So based upon these factors, we believe that the owner, Patty Duval, satisfies the balancing test and that the variance should be granted. With regard to the criteria having to do with the values of surrounding properties not being diminished, this has been designed such that we are striving to create one lot which is going to be fully conforming, that is, the two-acre lot, and then one acre, or one lot will be as conforming as possible, which is going to be one acre. Both of these are going to be used for single-family residents, so that they'll be seamlessly meshed with the remainder of the neighborhood in terms of the use. And they are going to be located in a residential neighborhood where the lot sizes vary, anywhere from a half an acre to five acres. The net result of all of this is that the size of the lots that we are proposing, namely two acres and one acres, won't really stand out, so as to cause any potential diminution in property for the remaining properties around there. Finally, on the hardship criteria, the special conditions do exist for this property. As you can see from the surveyed plan, this is a very long, large lot with approximately 100, excuse me, 720 feet of frontage on Bedford Road, and it has no known wetlands. In many respects, it is ideally suited for a subdivision without, and it won't cause undue congestion, given the long, narrow nature of the lot. We believe that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the public purpose of the lot size requirement and the application of the lot in this matter in order to create two lots, one being two acres and one being one. This will not, this variance if granted will not create an overly congested neighborhood. And as I said before, there's quite a variety in the sizes of the lots, and this will fall right in the middle of those variations in size. And each, again, will also contain, will contain a single-family home as well. What I pointed out in the material submitted with the variance application is that the property owner could, as a matter of right, create a large accessory structure, for example, a barn or some kind of a studio or something like that, on the lot without getting a variance that would create, in some respects, the perception or the illusion of a second dwelling, and therefore have some of the same impacts that a second dwelling unit would be anyway in terms of structures on the lot. In the same fashion, she could also, if she chose to, convert the property to a condominium form of ownership with a second unit on the lot, thus creating the same issue. So we don't feel that, given the, what's going to be accomplished here, that there's any fair and substantial relationship between the purpose and the application. Finally, the proposed lot, development of the lot is reasonable. We simply want to create a new lot and a new house and on land which would otherwise be able to support, as a matter of right, the concepts that I just mentioned, which would be, say, a large accessory structure or a condominium form of ownership. We don't believe that any more congestion will be created by the second lot that otherwise might be created through matters which were allowed as a matter of right. So with that, we believe that we have satisfied the variance criteria, and we would ask that the application be granted as presented. I would be happy to answer any questions which the board may have, and Henry, of course, is here to answer any additional engineering-type questions. And Patty can jump in if need be with information that she knows as the property owner.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Appreciate it. Any questions on board?
Can you help me out on the side? You're saying you don't have a survey yet?
We do. We don't have an engineered plan, but this, go ahead.
We have not done a full boundary survey of the property, but it's based on compiled record plans of the butters and those things in the tax map. It's going to cost a fair amount of money for Mr. Duval to survey the property, so I had felt that there was sufficient evidence to go forward with this to try to get the variance, because if she's not granted the variance, then she's out a substantial amount of money for the cost of the survey, if she can't subdivide. The other thing that we did do, though, is that we didn't want to come before you with something that couldn't work, so we have done officially witness test pits out there to make sure that there is enough soils and property that could support a second septic system. One thing that didn't get mentioned that probably should mention is there is an old dwelling foundation there from way, way back in time. I don't know how long ago the house actually was gone. Maybe Doug has some history to that, but there was a foundation, it's extremely, it's extremely old. So at one time.
He only goes back to the 1850s. It's older than that.
So at one point, my point is, at one point, there certainly were two different dwellings on this lot, and I know that was probably before zoning, but it certainly isn't out of character to have another home here. We will, if we're granted the variance, do a full boundary survey, obviously, to prove out. The other thing we'll have to do is a study to make sure that they've got, say, safe distance and all of those planning board issues, but we do not have an actual on-ground full boundary survey of the property.
So of the three things, from looking at the numbers on this survey, and coming up with three acres?
The tax map actually says that it's 3.2 acres, per the tax map.
Well, I want to struggle with this. I mean, you felt like wiggle room, and you've given yourself wiggle room on both sides.
Right.
Are you comfortable that there's at least three?
Based on the data and the evidence that we have, yes. To tell you absolutely that we have it, as Sharon said, one of the lots would be a minimum of two acres. I believe the one, the other one will be in excess of one acre, but without a full actual on-ground boundary survey, we can't, I can't stand here definitively and say, yes, sir, you have 3.2 acres or more than three. I believe that to be true, based on the evidence that we have.
We could put in a condition that says if it falls, if the second lot falls under a certain amount, that it's not true, based on the survey.
Okay. But what I prefer is that you do away with the minimum description on the two-acre property. So the two-acre property will be two acres, and the one-acre property will be a minimum of one acre. If there's some change left over, then the property's going to the smaller.
I understood. Yep, that, yes, yep.
Keep that in mind for condition time.
Yeah, so in other words, Lot A, as I show, has to be two acres, and the other one is whatever it is in excess of one acre.
Correct. Minimum, but not less.
And that was my kind of an attempt, why I put minimum in there, to try to do something like that, but I understand, sir, what you're saying. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions on the board? Anne?
I can turn a question on the driveway. You want to try it?
Yeah, I can.
What it says, and you mentioned that it anticipated that the second problem will not be served the road directly, not being the current communication D O T. Do you argue with that?
We don't anticipate that there's going to be a problem with it, but certainly that would be an appropriate condition of approval for this board to, you know, indicate that in order for this variance to be effective, that DOT approval would need to be, and that's going to happen anyway. That's going to, that's going to happen anyway when it goes to the planning board, so.
Because if you did get it, then how would we, if you said it was structured?
Without the curb cut, there would be no access.
Right. Right.
And just so you're aware of these things, generally, if you have less than 400 square, 400 feet of driveway access, they don't have to grant you a second curb cut. And even if you did, they would prove that you have to have 400 feet of septic distance to do it, so when we do the subdivision, we have to make sure that, and it's not just a horizontal curb thing, it's a vertical thing as well, so we have to make sure that whatever driveway we design has to be safe before DOT would permit it. And that, and as Sharon said, that has to happen, or the planning board won't approve the lot.
Okay. Any further questions on the board?
Just briefly, I think, I mean, you can sort of scale it out, but Henry, can you give us a sense of the frontage, the anticipated approximate frontage for each lot post-subdivision?
I would guess that it's probably going to be about 300 and 400, something like that. The test pits that we conducted would fall within that area, and they're actually very close to that old foundation, just behind it. One of the things that I thought made this a good candidate for consideration was that as Sharon has said, there's no wetland on the property, and the soils are fantastic, so it can support that. But my guess would be that it would be more than 250, probably upwards of 300 for the Lot B, leaving a remainder, if that tax map figure of 720 is right, so it's going to be, they'll have access in 400 feet of frontage probably on the bigger lot.
I have two questions. I understand that DOT is not guaranteed under 400 feet. We are discussing placing a constraint on an approval that would mean that you are not going to be able to get 400 feet for that because of the size of the two lots. Is that a constraint that you're willing to accept, as opposed to saying that the line between the two lots can be flexible?
I would prefer that that be handled at the planning board, because I think that that's the proper jurisdiction for driveway cut issues.
But you make a condition on an approval. Your hands are tied.
But I think the condition that you were trying to establish was for area, not necessarily frontage or the location of the line.
You'd end up with a pretty weird-looking lot, but that's up to you. Okay, that's the first thing. Second question I have, and I think this may be more for Sharon, I'm not sure, or even for the owner. As I look at the way this is divided in the neighborhood, I'm under the impression that it's possible that the two lots behind were once part of the same property, 25 and 25.1. I'm just wondering if there was a previous division of the property, lot-line adjustment, or whether there were any conditions placed on that approval at that time.
On 25 and 25.1?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, because of the way that they're split out behind, I'm just wondering if there was, do you happen to know? You don't believe so?
I don't know. I'm unaware.
I'm looking at code enforcement.
Yeah.
Not that you're, okay. Because if there had been, there might have been a condition placed on it, like the front lot can't be subdivided or something, so I just wanted to make sure there were no pre-existing rules governing this. So you're not aware of that either, Mr. Duval? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. It may be a question for Doug as well, which is, do you know if, I'm just looking at some of the lot sizes in Deer Haven and in Greenleaf, are those conventional subdivisions or are those open space subdivisions? Are those conventional subdivisions or are those open space subdivisions?
They're small, not too regular, probably.
Okay. Okay.
I think Greenleaf may pre, I think Greenleaf predates zoning. That's pretty old. Greenleaf may predate zoning. Was it?
Can I ask how many bedrooms the perk tests, or is there, is that known yet? How many bedrooms do you perk test apart?
Based on the soils, though, we had not rapid absorption, but a good soils absorption rate. So, you could design certainly a four-bedroom house in there. Anything five-bedroom above, it gets to a different type of system. So, I would imagine it's going to be probably a three-bedroom house, but it could support four.
It could support four. Okay, I just want to make sure it was adequate to support a typical home for that neighborhood.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
The other thing I would add, that lot to satisfy New Hampshire subdivision approval. So, whenever you create a lot without sewer in New Hampshire, that's less than five acres in size, she'll have to get a New Hampshire subdivision approval first. And without sewer, the lot has to be a minimum of an acre. But with, and without town water. If it had town water, it could go a half acre, but she's on a well as well. So, it would have to be an acre anyhow.
Okay. No further questions from the board, thank you very much. I'll open it up to the public. If any members of the public would like to ask a question or speak on behalf or against the applicant of the application, please step forward. Go at once. Thank you. Yes, please? Yes, if you would please just give your name and your address and then let's hear your question.
The property just north of the new lot to be subdivided. And I just wanted to start by saying that, you know, throughout this process, Patty's kept us in the loop and been really upfront and respectful about what she's, you know, hoping to do here. And we certainly understand the appeal of going after getting this lot subdivided. However, I will say, after much discussion in our household, you know, we do feel like we need to take this opportunity to at least state on the record that, you know, this subdivision is, we don't feel is going to be in our long-term interest in adding a house in this particular area would very likely negatively affect our property value. Now, it makes sense, the need for exceptions to minimum lot size requirements, and there's always cases where, you know, the spirit of the rule can be maintained even if the absolute numbers don't meet the somewhat arbitrary targets. And to that end, I mean, a house lot along essentially any of our other property lines would be a non-issue. But unfortunately, in this situation, the lot in question, it's just situated really quite close to our existing home and it would definitely reduce the privacy of, you know, what we have here as a sort of a rural-feeling home. So, when we built our house several years ago, you know, we looked at the surrounding lots and we referenced the subdivision requirements and all that. And so, we came into it pretty confident that, you know, something like this probably wouldn't happen. And we took that into account when we positioned the house and laid out the floor plan and, you know, put the windows and all that. So, you know, in the important rooms, the living room, the guest room, the master bedroom, we have them kind of pointed off in a way that's nice and private. Some of the other rooms that face existing neighbors are hallways and, you know, boring stuff like that. Now, unfortunately, the lot in question and where the house would go, it would look, you know, directly onto what's currently the kind of private side of our house. And anyway, just wanted to put that out there on the record.
Mr. Everbeck, since he's, while he's still online? Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your calling in.
Actually, I didn't catch how long ago it was that you built your home.
It's about four years ago.
Thank you.
Anyone else, members of the public or online? Hearing none, I'll close the public session and ask Ms. Summers if you'd like to offer any commentary before we move to deliberation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to respond to Mr. Everbeck's comments that I don't believe this is going to affect the property values because it's simply going to be another single-family house next to their single-family home. As to the fact that the lot is situated close to, or the lot will be situated close to their home, again, I would point out the fact that if Patty DeVal wished to, she could construct as a matter of right a large structure and so long as it's within the setback, it may have the same kind of effects that they're talking about anyway. And I think as well that certainly something could be done and if you'll give me just two seconds here. So, I mean, you know, practical solutions-
That's where I was going.
Practical solutions can be derived to address the concerns of the Everbeckes, which I appreciate. But again, I believe the fact that they have concerns about their property values is misplaced because she could do, you know, a lot of what they're talking about anyway as a matter of right. And then secondly, landscaping, fencing, that kind of thing could be used as well. So, with that, unless there's any further questions from the board, I would-
All set. Thank you, Ms. Summers, appreciate it. We're going to close public session now, move to deliberation on this case. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug or Barb, we couldn't place a condition on this as far as screening or landscaping is concerned? This is strictly a use- I agree.
Yeah, I'd be hesitant, Bob. I mean, I think we actually can do it, but I would be hesitant to do it in any way that's really a planning board. They'll be able to dive in much more deeply.
I agree. You're not going to have control over it either because you're going to sell the property at the end of it. You're going to sell that lot. You may develop it yourself or you may sell it. But I believe you've heard the request from your abutter and hopefully that would be passed along. In terms of deliberation, where are we? Any ideas? Questions? I mean, I view the property, it seems to me that there's really good screening there. The road is relatively straight. I don't know the criteria that D O T uses for curb cut on a state road like that.
It's based on the amount of frontage and site distance, which has to do with-
Well, as far as on a vertical. So, I mean, that's completely out of our control.
Well, I think, Bob, my thought on that, too, is that, you know, it's really not an issue here because this is such a long lot. I mean, frontage is, there's clearly sufficient frontage. You know, it's in line with all the other, even with this subdivision, the frontage is in line with the surrounding lots or greater in some cases.
Well, definitely greater than the house directly across the street.
I view that one as a bit of an outlier, but there's certainly other similarly sized lots. You know, some that were highlighted, some that weren't, as I, you know, as you- That's why I asked the question about Greenleaf and about Deer Haven. But even if you ignore those, if you look at Lot Six on the tax map, 22-
You know, all the 22s, none of those have 400 foot.
Right.
There's like five in a row there and none of them. So, I don't see that to be a major issue here. So, I, I mean, I would generally be in favor of granting this application unless there's a strong objection from anyone.
I think the shape of the lot, the amount of frontage and the fact that there was most likely two houses on it at some point in history kind of all go in favor of the application. So, I'm generally in favor.
Okay. Does somebody want to walk us through the variance criteria quickly just to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's? Oh, I'm getting rusty. I haven't done this in a long time. I'm not supposed to, though, as chair, am I?
I don't think you are, but-
Yeah, what the- Yeah, that the use is permitted, especially- Wrong page. It's a variance. The variance is not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. As Ms. Summers stated earlier, the idea behind the variance is to keep, or behind the rule is to keep a consistency to neighborhoods. And I don't see anything here that would be inconsistent with that goal. And so, I believe that the spirit of the ordinance is observed by granting this variance request. Number three, substantial justice is done. The benefits of the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or to other individuals. With the exception of the abutter to the immediate west who has concerns over his privacy, I don't see that there's any mismatch here between the benefit of the applicant and the general public or other individuals.
Seems to be adequate room for placement for both this potential home and the house that was all built four years ago on a 4.44-acre lot. So, I feel that, you know-
It's actually only two.
Well, and I think it's, you know, you have to, I'm looking at the lot size and just that that's the request for relief tonight.
Right.
And does, you know, does a one-acre lot size, does that, how does that relate to the potential impact of a neighbor? As long as setbacks are met, you can put a house anywhere on that lot. This current house could be torn down, rebuilt, or as the applicant has indicated, you could build an outbuilding there. And as long as they need setbacks, there's, you know, they have the right to do that. And that could equally affect neighbors.
Right.
Well, in addition, the right-of-way serves as an official proper between the two properties.
Right, whatever the town on strip there is, it's probably no more than 50 foot if that.
Well, I don't, yeah, although that's, I think it was Lot 25, I thought was the-
Right.
So, the right-of-way is in between those two, but, or I'm not, actually, I'm not sure if you're talking about the town lot or-
The gentleman who called in is in Lot 23, is he not?
I thought it was 25 behind.
Oh, behind.
Parcel.
Ah, so he's one of the people who uses the common access. I see, I see, I, sorry, I thought it was 23. It's Lot 25.
But it is still, it is a 30, or I'm sorry, it's a 25-foot rear. So, it would be a minimum of 50 feet.
Right, and that's fully tree land, it's fully landscaped, fully matured.
So, we're saying that the farther than 25, oh?
No, 25.
25.
Yes.
25.
That's why I was confused when you said four acres. That's what puzzled me because I thought it was only two. You're right, he's back there. Got it. Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
And he can get that down the right-of-way, got everything?
No, he gets access around. They have a shared, may I come over?
This lot, this lot has a shared driveway that comes out here. Comes around the property and comes out here. This is town, but it's not in actual right-of-way.
Did I get that right, Henry? Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Unfortunately, we have some anecdotal comments, but we have no testimony. I don't see that this would, I mean, there may be an issue with privacy in view, but I don't think it's going to diminish the value of the property to have something out, a home on this one acre parcel in front.
And again, I think it has to relate to the specific requests. In this case, I think that the issue is distance between the homes and that's governed by setbacks.
Very good. Okay. And number five, which always takes me longer to read than it does for us to analyze, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. I'm not sure that there's a hardship here. I don't believe asking the applicant to retain ownership of the parcel is a hardship. On the other hand, I would not want to place somebody in a position where they felt they had to sell their property in order to continue to, if they were unable to continue to live there without subdividing it. So, I don't know about the issue of hardship here. I always struggle with this one.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's met for the reasons that I had said. One is, it's a, you know, if you look at the A, B, C, special conditions exist, this is a long, narrow lot. If you look at the other lots in the area, even subdivided, it will have equivalent frontage. You know, all of the other lots are sort of long and narrow in the other direction.
Yep.
In this case, it's going to have equivalent frontage. It's going to be equivalent in size and there is case law that basically says that if you, you know, if you're, if you're consistent with all the surrounding area, you know, the surrounding areas are hardship, the surrounding properties. And again, in this case, the fairness, whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the public purpose, again, it goes to the lot size requirement. And in this case, I think the applicant articulated nicely that, you know, that is to provide some uniformity of lot sizes. They, this, I think, is in line with what's there, which is not particularly consistent, but it's in line with the surrounding area. And then likewise, I think it's going to create a frontage that's in line with that as well. And that's going to have the greatest impact.
It was the frontage.
And that's, right, that's where it connects with Brentwood Road and it's, and the west of, most of the rest of the area. And then you just have to find that the development of a lot is reasonable and, you know, this is a rural residential area and that's what they're proposing. So, that's met.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I mean, we approve the request for-
Variance.
For subdivision of the existing parcel, the division to be with two acres going to Lot A and a minimum of one acre going to Lot B.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Chair votes aye. Approve 5-0. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you, too.
Okay. So, second application is the application of William Curtis for a variance from Article 6.10 Home Occupations, Section 6.10.2 Evidence of Use to permit more than one commercial vehicle to be parked overnight on the property located at 99 Beach Hill Road. Subject property is located in the RU Rural Zoning District, tax map parcel 13-7. This is case 20-11. Is the applicant with us? Please step to the mic. Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
So, we're here, I'm Mariah Curtis and William Curtis. We're here from 99 Beach Hill Road. And we have a part-time business, it's Curtis Street Care. And we have some trucks, commercial trucks, they're labeled trucks, that we would like to park in our yard. We have, in our yard, I don't know if you see the picture, but it's a gravel road that goes all the way around the house, mostly for the four-wheeler, for the kiddos, but also for the winter so that we can maneuver in snow and whatever else. An additional parking way in the back.
We have that.
Okay. So, on the side, there is a green tent. We usually never park there unless we're doing yard work. It's not a parking area, it's just a, all the way around. The parking is usually next to the garage, which I have house. That's the garage. And then there's parking that goes all, like, gravel, that's all on that side. We have, would like to have three vehicles.
I have two vehicles currently. They're lettered Curtis Street Care on the doors and on the front. I don't have any signage, I'm not using them for signage. It was a D O T requirement to have lettering on the vehicle to be able to be seen from 50 feet away. The vehicles are just parked there for Saturday use. I don't have employees, no one works at the house.
We don't utilize the house and/or the yard for tax write-offs and/or business?
I see there's two, I'm just looking at the picture. There are two vehicles, but it also looks like there's two trailers. Are those also work, are those work trailers?
They're personal and I do occasionally use them for work. It's, if I have to go get loans for- If I have to go get loan for the house or soil, I use them for that. That one trailer is a 2017, you know, 2019, and I've used it two times.
Are those lettered as well, or just the...
Nothing is lettered, none of, none of the trailers are lettered, they use to transport four-wheelers as well, any, any other ATV, bicycle. So they have other purposes, but yes, they do get used for the business as well if I have to transport something.
So the one I'm struggling with is, what you've asked for the provision to have more than one.
Yes.
More than one, 50 is more than four.
I think a max of four, I said, in one of the segments.
Ah.
Or up to four.
I think, I didn't, Mariah typed this up for me, but I believe it, we asked for a maximum of four, and one of them is just a pickup truck that's not lettered, that we do use for, you know, family use as well, but it has a flatbed body on the back, I have pictures if anyone would like to see, it's just a pickup truck. They're, they're all pickup trucks, considered commercial vehicles, not by their, their size, but by their usage.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see anywhere in here where there was a maximum.
I think I do, I...
It's on Section 1, not public, contrary to the public issue.
Oh, yes, no more than four.
It says not more than four declared vehicles, so I actually would like to clarify that, because it sounds like you've got, you're asking for three lettered vehicles, and then you have a unlettered pickup truck that you sometimes use for the business?
Yes, I have, I have not, the place has letters, and I may letter that truck, and that would be the fourth declared letter, lettering truck, but I've deceased every, I haven't done any more lettering because of this meeting and everything's closed, but I do plan on lettering it.
And can you describe, I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the photo, I'll wait. What I'm trying to get a sense of in looking at this photo is, you know, there, I'd feel a lot better if there was some screening or some, I mean, typically, the idea for a home business is that it's supposed to be, you know, limited from view, is, I'm just wondering, I mean, they're, they're just parked right here in the circular driveway.
Yeah, so this is an aerial view, so this is our actual backyard, so you can't see that from the front.
Okay, so yeah, maybe if you could orient me, is that in the left, bottom left, is that your residence?
You can hold that up for me. So...
We tried to do an aerial view.
I might have a picture that's from the road, actually.
I'm sure Phyllis has a picture.
But, so our house is, is roadside. What you're seeing here is, is parking spaces, but there's a, there's a stone wall, there's liite bushes, a red maple tree, a landscape, mulch, done a really good job from what it used to be, was...
So that's a...
You can't find trees, cut it all down, and the landscape did really well. Driving by the road, if you really wanted to crane your naked leg, you're, you're going to see it, but the neighbor on the other side is blocked by, you really can't see through all, all trees. The neighbor's to our other side, and you can't see from their property, because our house is blocking it. The only way to see it is if you drove by and looked to your left or right.
And there's a fence that goes all the way down, a fence that goes all the way down on both sides. So this is in the air, coming down, from, from the...
So that, that picture was, was taken from the air, but I, I probably haven't got a photo.
And would you, did you ever park anything behind the other houses?
Behind the other houses? No, this is directly behind our house here. You see an orange truck in the background?
Oh, the way our property goes that way?
Yeah.
So what is back there is trees and nothing. There is a little dirt path where the kiddos ride their four-wheeler, but there's nothing ever parked down there.
So that's some of our concern, is if we, if we give you permission tonight, we have to make, I mean, you may never park anything back there, or you may not now ever park anything back there, but conditions can change.
Sure.
Ownership can change, and this is going to run with your property. So part of what we have to determine is, you know, we have to look at all those potential...
Sure. And it's, well, it slopes down into, I don't know if we're considered right there as a wetland, but where this gravel ends, you can see in the corner, down here, slopes down into mud, ferns, I've, I've thinned it out and dried it out a little bit, and you can drive back there a few times during the season, I've put wood chips back there, I've dumped wood chips for, for kids in little areas to make, make a trail, but...
It is pretty close to the other two houses.
I think there's a well.
Yeah, it's pretty close. I actually have, Doug, can I ask a question of you for, if you don't mind? If this, if this was to become a full-time business for these folks, would that change anything? Does this permission, is this a, is this a step towards that? I, I don't want to...
Not even if we're a full-time business, you'd rather be a, you have a home occupation permit, just because together, part-time, is a little, you're going to do this full-time...
Nothing will change.
...home occupation.
Okay.
Then you're going to do this as a full-time.
All right, thank you.
So what he needs, he already has the home occupation permit, what he needs is just the permission to park more vehicles.
It says not more than one commercial vehicle parked at the dwelling overnight.
Yeah, we call it a need for forgiveness for that.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not, not basically...
Okay.
So he parks in backwards when he, if, when we use the vehicles during the day, so that if he ever, so you have the...
Well, I mean, I, 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 you, you pull around.
Well, I, I avoid pulling around unless I'm unloading, which is, one time out of 365 days, I would drive, I try to avoid my neighbor to my left's property, never use my backup alarms or anything, I always try to pull in without, I don't want, I'm trying not to disturb everyone. When I move to the property, I ask all of my neighbors were okay with me being here and doing this. All my abutters except one love what I've done with the place and are all for it. And I, I try to tread lightly, I understand that people want to live their life in, in peace and enjoy their weekends, and, and I don't work out of the house, I, I drive a truck out of there on a Saturday and bring it back on a Saturday. And on occasion, my yard might not look 100% neat, because I get sidetracked with the kids, but I try to line everything up perfectly and make it look nice. So...
Do you have a parking area for these trucks, or is it just in the circular driveway?
No, so this, the whole, where the house is, you can't really see it because it's shadowed, but this full section, so our driveway's right here, is, it has gravel, so it, it's parking. It could park, you could park vehicles there.
Right, I'm just, I'm just wondering if you have...
And then in the front of it is where it's like trees and the, the brick stones that go across.
Well, and, and to answer that a little further, as, as I get resistance from, from one neighbor, I decided to expand down back a little bit. I, I spent almost $10,000 to dig this up a little bit, put gravel, I talked to Doug of what I could and couldn't do, and I started parking some of my stuff down there. It's meant a lot of money just to...
Are you talking about this in the back?
In, in the back, just to make it not visible from anybody. But I can't always do that. It snows two feet, I, I don't have the equipment to, to get stuff out, there's a stone wall back there, the mice, the swirl, they've, they've been in all of my stuff, so I've moved my stuff back up front, but I did try to make a consideration, just out of good faith, to be a nice neighbor and do that. If that means anything, I, I don't know, but...
Yeah, well, it's helpful, I mean, one of the things I'm trying to get is, I, you know, I'd feel more comfortable knowing that there's a designated sort of screened area, so that we know that the trucks are going to be out of sight, or as out of sight as possible for the...
Correct, and they, they're only seen by driving by, and for half the year, folks are, are here, for the other half, they're in Florida. So I, there's exceptions I can make, I try to make when they're here, and I do things a little different when they're not.
Sure.
But there is screening, you drive by, there's a nice rock wall out front, there's liite, there is screen, I wish, I, like I said, I probably do have a photo. But there is, there is proper, there, there is pretty nice screen. You, you really have to be looking and wanting it to be an issue, which it never was for years, and, and all of a sudden, it was.
They're registered, maintained, clean, non-rusted, well-kept vehicles.
They're all, well, they're all brand new, except...
Are there any further questions for the, for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yep?
The property turn, maybe actually, turns into a commercial business, and whether it's all not used?
No.
No, it was just an, an ice, I'm sorry, you asking me, or?
And that's kind of the question, Ian, that I asked Doug, I mean, if he turns this into a full-time business, it doesn't really matter, nothing changes, still going to be the same number of trucks. So we are essentially giving permission for storage of vehicles on-site. Right now, a home occupation would, technically, would have to keep the vehicles elsewhere.
And that is my, if this does turn into a full-time business, I will be able to afford to, to rent a, a property as the, the amount of stuff that I have, I don't see myself ever getting any more than what I have. It's a really condensed business, but...
But the thing is, for this board, is that, is that how many vehicles you have, commercial vehicles, whether they're parked in one of the...
Right. Yep, it's specific, 6 dot 10 dot 2.
Yeah, and I think my, well, yeah, specifically one, in this case, they want three more, and I think that the concern is if it does grow, there's nothing to prevent additional use, and, you know, that may not make, I mean, that probably, if they're just parked there, it doesn't make any difference if they're coming on and off, and there's, you know, and, and their backup alarms are going, then that's going to be more of an issue for the neighbors, but...
You'd never be able to move them.
Sure, and, and...
The other concern...
If you limit it to that number of vehicles, I wouldn't be able to grow beyond that.
Right, but those could also be, you know, three bucket trucks and a pickup truck too, so, I mean, if it turns into a real business, then, if your neighbors are looking at a buck, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I have a lift that's just a portable aerial lift that gets, is, is...
Trailer.
I have, is trailer, I have no need for ever having a bucket truck or nor want one.
Again, but the business...
Sure.
Could, in your hands or somebody else's, grow, and there could be three bucket trucks.
We're giving you permission for three commercial vehicles, or four...
Oh, I understand.
Potentially, on-site, whether they're, you know, whether people disable the backup alarms and stuff or not, and so that's why we're trying to...
And I would be okay if there's a limitation of below a certain GVW, so that never happened.
GVW?
Gross vehicle weight. So like, one of my, my biggest, my biggest truck is GVW of 16,000 pounds. To get into a bucket truck, commercial bucket truck, they're 30,000 pound GVW trucks, CDL requirement. I am okay with having that, that it never exceeds a, I'm sorry, a 9, the F550 is 19,000 GVW, it's a regular, still pickup truck, not exceed 19,000 GVW, so that would never happen.
Okay.
That's an interesting idea, because commercial vehicle is a little vague, isn't it?
Yeah.
Doug, from an enforcement perspective, is that, would that be, that workable?
The priority is the traffic, but is the registration, that you would sometimes have the reason, you know, there, how many vehicles, and gross vehicle weight, you just apply on that.
It's on the registration, it's public record.
If we were to put a condition of approval on that no vehicles are to exceed 20,000 GVW, you would, that would work for you?
Correct.
Maybe that's a way to...
Does the, all right, have one larger than the restricted recording?
But we're saying that if we're going to let them have four, that's what we want to put up.
We're going to pay for that.
He's comfortable with it.
Okay.
Could you repeat your question? I, I didn't understand.
So if we were to put a condition onto a, a potential approval, that limited use, that were to say no vehicles to exceed 20,000 pounds of gross vehicle weight?
G, yes, 20,000, yes.
You would be okay with that? That wouldn't hurt your...
It would not hurt.
Okay.
And I think Rick's point was that that would include all the vehicles, so though you get one, under the ordinance, our expectation would be that there would be no...
Be none.
Yes, I agree, yes, yes.
We're trying to just protect the neighborhood.
Sure, I, I understand, yeah.
Well, because if we move or whatever, then you could, yes, totally understand.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's very good, thank you for bringing that up.
That could have been a loophole, glad you brought it up, thank you.
Are there, are there, I just want to move things along, are there any further questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Thielbacher?
I'm sure you guys would agree with it, but the next guy, parking the vehicles in the car of the property that has been rained, or, or that's your neighbor.
Would you accept a condition saying you do not park behind those two properties?
Oh, yeah, you don't park, yeah, behind.
I, yeah, I would be completely satisfied with that.
You're supposed to get stuck back there.
No, that's fine, but we can't tell that from here, and I do it a drive-by, and you can't tell from driving by, so that's good.
And I am, I, I do have several abutters here, and one of those abutters is, is, is here.
Do you happen to know the house numbers?
Oh.
Since our tax map doesn't show that?
I think they have put a tax card.
And we have, I don't know if they made it in...
You're at 99?
Three, two other letters that were getting, was written and dropped off by my, two other abutters and a zoom.
We can base it on the, well, first of all, we, we still need to hear from the public, but, and they may like comments, but, you know, we can certainly make reference to the tax maps as shown in the application, in terms of the lots.
Okay, yes, good point.
This application would be the record.
Good point. Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, we'll be back to you in a moment.
Thank you.
Patience. We're going to open this up to the public now, and if anybody would like to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name, your address, and let's hear your question. Hi.
Hi.
I was going to call on you, you don't need to raise your hand.
Okay, I didn't want to ask about...
Okay.
On the application, the dates that I...
And you need, you need to tell us who you are and speak into the microphone, because this is a public meeting.
My name is Phyllis Swentworth, I live at 103 Beach Hill, and have for 60-plus years.
Oh, is that the house right next door?
Exactly, exactly. My husband and I have lived there for, as I said, 60 years. It's always been rural residential, not commercial. Mr. Curtis has had three trucks in his yard, plus various pieces of good size equipment for some time, off and on. There's only, there's only right, two right now, trucks, one is a pickup truck plus the two trucks. And then he has some kind of a piece of equipment, which I have no idea is. As far as noise goes, he's usually quiet, but the week, one of the weeks in July, he had work done up there, and they had beepers going from 7:00 in the morning until 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, which wasn't too pleasant to live with. Traffic has increased up there, as you are well aware, of the high school being in, probably within a half a mile. And we have a lot of high school students that run up there when they have track meets, if this Corona ever gets over. And many families have small children, they walk the road, they ride their bicycles. It just, he started with one truck.
Thank you.
And it was supposed to be a landscaping business. It continues to grow every year. I have spoken with Doug several times, for quite a while, actually, 2013 is when I asked questions to Doug, and it just continues to grow. Finally, this last time, Doug told him he had to do something, and here we are tonight. Finally, this last time, Doug told him he had to do something, and here we are tonight. I really feel it's detrimental to our property and the neighborhood. And as you can see in the pictures, it's right in the front yard, and I wouldn't want it in the backyard either, because I'd get double. The lady on the other side of us is 103 years old. She does not hear well, so nothing really bothers her.
Wait, wait till the, speaking of not hearing well, wait till the motorcycle clears. Okay, give it another shot.
The lady on the one side is 103, she doesn't hear well, so it doesn't bother her. The people that have recently bought the trailer, I don't think they've been there very long, and I don't think they get the noise factor that we get. And as far as any, and the people that are affected are 103 Beach Hill, ours, 105, and 107. Their land goes in back of, Curtis' land going back of all three houses.
Show number two on the... I think she's referring to, it touches on this, her house as well, the side there.
I believe Mr. Web...
Triangular lot.
Mr. Webb owns on the other side of the stone wall down back. And that's my story.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the, can you get your chance? Patience, everyone. Yeah. Any other members of the public like to address the board or ask a question? Okay, the applicant has, the applicant has the right, is there somebody online?
Yes, there is one person. They are called E. Scard.
Sorry, couldn't make that out.
Hi, yes, this is Emily Scarda, 109 Beach Hill Road.
109, okay. Hi.
Hi, yes. I am the property that you were just referring to, a triangular shape that then abuts the back of the Curtis', is?
Seven, okay.
I just wanted to advocate for you and Mariah and state that I have never seen any commercial vehicle parked in the back, I've never heard one parked back behind the property. And again, the only thing I've seen is their children that ride their ATVs or their four-wheelers occasionally back there.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your calling in.
Thank you. Thank you.
But with respect to the fact that you remain in, may have, that should be a problem.
Well, okay, I'm not going to, do the members of the board have these, Doug?
I have.
Yep. Yep. So before we move on from public session, I just want to acknowledge that we have two letters. One is from Jerry Sterrett, which is at 98 Beach Hill Road, writing in support of the application for a variance. And we have a letter from Judith Nichols, whose address is not given, I guess I need to look that up.
100 Beach Hill?
100 Beach Hill Road. We have a handwritten, fairly long handwritten letter in regards to the application of William Curtis, blah, 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 lived here at 100 Beach Hill Road for 40 years, and is related to the Sterricks, apparently. And I believe this is also a letter of support. We've all received these in advance?
Can I take a look at those?
Of course.
I may have missed them in my...
So, we...
I have to go through all the emails that we got.
Correct. Would you like to say anything in response to Ms. Wentworth? And if, if it, if it's yes, then you need to speak in the microphone. Okay. If he, if, sorry, only because this is recorded for television.
Just wanted for, state for the record that we, we didn't move into the property until close to 2015, not 2013. She said that these, this has been a complaint.
Yeah, and we do understand about the kids and stuff. We have two little ones, and we're very aware of the traffic and the crazy speeders on that, that road, and we're obviously on top of the hill, so we are very, understand how important it is for traffic and driving and vision.
While you're here, I wonder if I might ask you a neighborhood question. As you go past your house and past 109, there is what looks to be a partially abandoned commercial building. Do you know what that is?
We have two speakers here, one of those speakers does own that building. So I do not know what that is, but Mr. Webb would.
Okay.
I have a question.
But I had asked people if anybody else wanted to speak, so he didn't, so we didn't have any testimony from Mr. Webb. I don't know who Mr. Webb is.
This is Mr. Webb, and this is John, who would also like to speak.
Well, they should have when I said, did anyone else like to speak? So I, okay, we're going to reopen the public then, okay?
Before they, I do have a question about the photographs, and you're welcome to come up and look at them. I'm just trying to get a sense, the buildings are right next to the, I'm sorry, the vehicles are right next to the house in this picture? Is that correct?
That, this truck is, is actually just...
So can you actually answer that question from the, from the podium?
I'm sorry, the, we can, we can hear you, but the, they won't pick you up on video unless you're on the microphone.
Yep, understood. So can you please ask me the question again?
So my question is, in this picture, it shows the vehicles to the right of a building. I wanted to confirm that those are, the vehicles are next to the residence.
To my garage, yes.
Okay, and that's attached to the house?
To the house, yes.
Okay.
And that is the garage opposite side of Mrs. Wentworth's property.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I just wanted to get a sense of where everything was.
Okay, I'll try this again. If anybody else would like to speak, please step up to the microphone.
I'm not going to speak, but I'm in favor.
Well, you, you...
My name is Bob Webb. I own all around here.
Sorry we have to make you walk up here, but it's the only way we can record it. Your name is?
Bob Webb, and I own all the land around there.
Okay.
And these people have spent thousands of dollars making things right. I should say they should get a variance, and I want to be on record as that.
Okay.
He runs a neat property, he's cleaned up the property, that's all I get to say.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
He's a good neighbor.
Appreciate it. So you own the parcel out behind him?
Yes.
And all that?
And down the road, too.
And that blue building, that's right.
That's mine.
Terrific. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'm John Heisey. I'm on 105 Beach Hill. So we bought in the backyard, a small piece.
Yep, you're, okay, next to, between the Wentworths and...
And I'm in favor. And, remember had any issues, noise issues, anything like that? If I didn't know any better, you know, driving by every day, I wouldn't know there was any sort of business going on there, so it's pretty hard to tell and hidden well and clean. And that's it.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, last name again.
It's Heisey, H-E-I-S-E-Y.
Number six, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it, sir.
Who is it?
Oh, yes. Okay, would anyone else like to speak? And we'll close the public session, move into deliberative, move to deliberation. Okey-dokey, here we are. So again, this is a variance request, very specific, to allow three additional commercial vehicles. At the applicant's request, those vehicles would not individually, none of the four vehicles, the one currently allowed or the three new ones, would exceed, was it 20,000 gross vehicle weight, which is just over the size of the large modern pickup truck, I believe. So these are not bucket trucks, these are not commercial vehicles, or large commercial vehicles, but they are commercial, and they're going to have backup alarms, and they're going to have signs. And they are going to be parked, my observation, driving by, the other, is they're lined up neatly, but next to the house facing the road. So, any comments or questions from the board?
I did not drive by. Is there any obvious options for screening that might mitigate any concerns of, the party will object?
Vehicles are parked on the opposite side, are as far away as possible from, from the abutter.
Okay.
They're on the, the house and whatever the width, it's not a particularly large lot in terms of frontage. I'd have to guess, I can't say what it is, we don't have a particularly detailed map here. It is, the vehicles are parked on the opposite side. So, and I think that we can certainly place some conditions on this. In addition to the weight condition, I think it's entirely appropriate that we place a condition that there will be no parking of vehicles or road improvements, I know we can't really touch that, but there'll be no parking of the vehicles behind lots 103, 105, or 109, since we were able to identify what they were from each of the people who I mean, it's an interesting area, it's very rural, there's some very big houses, there's some small houses, there's some modest houses. Ms. Wentworth is absolutely correct, that a lot of kids from the, the track team runs on that road all the time from the high school, because if you go down, what is it, Old Town Farm Road, that takes you right out to the high school. So there's, you know, but this is, at present, a part-time occupation on Saturdays and weekends only. Our variance request would allow it to become a full-time business. It's not, I mean, he can make it a full-time business without us.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it already...
But it's a storage of vehicles.
Be a full-time business, I think, you know, and I think we have to assume in granting our, in granting any variance if we so choose, that it would be a part-time business, a full-time business. But yeah, we're not putting anything in that would result in that.
Right, and I'm very conscious of the fact that as you drive by the property, it is exceptionally neat and well taken care of. The vehicles are maintained, the property is well-maintained, it's obviously, as I believe as Mr. Webb said, the property, I don't know what it looked like before, but it's clearly well taken care of. However, the variance request runs with the land, not with the owners.
Correct.
And right now, if you own a business in Exeter and have commercial vehicles, you have to find a location to store them, because you can't keep them at your house. And that is, by some sites, a hardship. On the other hand, it does maintain residential neighborhoods as residential, and not commercial.
Right, but he can today park one very large piece of equipment.
Yep.
That is, that is...
One, not four.
However...
And for the business to expand, or even for the business to stay the same, I mean, it's one person, I don't know why he has four vehicles for one person, but that's not our business. But for him to maintain this as a business, he would have to take those trucks off-site.
Well, he can, just to be clear, he can have two additional non-residents. So he could have two non-resident under 6.10.1.
Non-resident...
Employees.
Employees.
That's employees, that's not the vehicles.
That's right, that's right. I just, in terms of, you asked my question of why he...
Oh, yeah, 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 no, understood.
I just wanted to be clear that, you know...
Understood. Understood. No, but as far as, but the variance is strictly to 6.10.2.
Well, but...
Which is the vehicles.
Today, he can park as many trucks as he wants behind, they're all in there.
Non-commercial.
Non-commercial.
That's right. If he owns 12 pickup trucks, he can park 12 pickup trucks back there. But as soon as it turns into commercial, with a separate plate and a separate registration, and then, then it becomes a commercial vehicle.
And it may not be what he intends to do, but if at 7:00 a.m. every day of the week, they all start rumbling out of there, you know, every, you know, it can turn into something. My home, before we owned it, tried to do something like that, and people objected, and I don't blame them for objecting. So I have some sympathy for that perspective as well. I don't think we want to necessarily prohibit this entirely, but I think we need to think about the conditions to protect the neighborhood.
I'm concerned about the apparent impact on the applicant of saying, okay, if you want to keep your part-time business, you're going to have to rent it, I mean, that's going to squash, that might squash the business. I'm uncomfortable doing that. I'm also uncomfortable in saying, forever, we will grant the right for there to be a commercial usage, and it's commercial vehicles, it could be, it doesn't need to be a treat, treat company, it could be any form of commercial business.
Well, no, wait a minute, he's got, he's got that already.
No.
Yeah.
If he sells that house, he can have a home occupation there...
Yeah.
With one vehicle...
Correct.
And two employees, for, without coming to us or ever seeing us again. But if we grant this variance, he can sell that house, and somebody could bring in four bucket trucks, or whatever, four commercial vehicles, modulo whatever, weight restrictions we put on.
Time restrictions.
Right, right. But it's still going to be four, that's a bad idea. It's still going to be four, and it's still going to, they're still going to have backup alarms, and they're still going to be, and they could be used not just on Saturdays, they could be used five or six days a week. I just want to make sure the applicant and everybody else understands exactly, this is not the simple, you know, William wants to keep four trucks in the yard, it's broader than that. So we need to make, I just want to make sure that we go into them with eyes wide open. That's all.
Do you have any, of a present, small fee, any, any, similar to this, come forward to this, or...
I don't recall a specific time we've been asked for 6.10.2 before. I'm sure it's happened.
Not, no memory either.
I don't recall a case of it.
So, um, that's, 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 that's...
That wasn't, that was home occupation, that wasn't vehicles.
We searched for them all the years.
Did we? Okay.
All the evidence, you have searched for them, you...
And that was right in that same area, too, that was on Old Town Farm Road, right down the road.
Right.
Right, right. So the question is, is the conditions that we have the ability to place on this, gross vehicle weight and location on the property, are some restrictions on location on the property sufficient to satisfy everyone's needs here?
Well, that's why I asked about additional screening, if there's, if there's a solution that presents itself for some additional screening. I haven't been there, I don't know how it lays out.
I mean, one of the things that we could ask is that, is that the storage of the vehicles be on the side of, the side of the building away from that abutter, that seems very specific to me.
That puts them, and my concern with that is that puts them, but where they are now, which is basically right, right in view of the driveway, and then there's no screening then from anyone driving by.
Yeah, I think the objection is more to noise than it is to appearance, because the property is, at present, extremely well-maintained, and the vehicles appear to be as well.
The stone wall sounds nice, I'm sure it's nice, I just don't know how much...
I mean, as you can see, though, there's four vehicles, but they are all lined up. It's quite clear they're, you know, they're... It's quite clear they're, you know, they're, they're lined up there.
I see that.
But again, how the hell do you enforce something like that?
Well, I just hear it. Oh, well, I think, I mean, it sounds like the gross vehicle weight is enforceable, and I think the restriction behind, you know, 103, 105, and 109 is, is pretty enforceable. I mean, that's pretty easy to see.
It's also impractical because of the conditions of the property.
It's also impractical. And I think to that end too, if the goal is to keep vehicles away from 103, then, you know, practically speaking, that's where the driveway is, I don't think that's gonna be, I mean, you could redo the driveway, but it seems unlikely.
There's a driveway on both sides of the house, there's a driveway to the left-
Oh, it goes around, okay.
There's a driveway to the left, the driveway makes a complete loop around the house.
Got it.
Well, I guess one of the things I was thinking about would be a solid fence.
But there's no, uh, across the front?
Just, you know, whatever, 25 feet or something.
I don't know how that would change anything.
I mean, I would feel a lot, I'd feel a lot better with this if, if I knew that there was a, that these vehicles were being kept in a specific area, they had some screening around it. And, and it doesn't appear that that's, that the case or the intention.
I think, I think that by just making the size restrictions on the floor, they're not talking about monster vehicles inspired up in the morning. And there's, right now, if he can come in there with a great big monster truck, or the next guy in line behind him, with what is, is all he has by rights. And so, if you, if this, if the objectionable thing is the number, and the fact that there's a bunch of pickup trucks out there, that's, that's not something that they really have a right to object to. If you, those trucks are all parked in rows, you can't see any sign on those trucks from the road.
You can actually, because it's, you know, the, the front, there's a, a sign that's visible from the front.
From the street?
Yeah, at the top of the one. It's not in these, yeah, it is, you can see, see the yellow, see above it? You can see a sign above it. You can tell it's a commercial vehicle, it's pretty subtle, Rick, but you can tell it's a commercial vehicle.
But I, yeah, I follow your point, Rick, that it's, you took the lathering-
The white one on the left.
If you took the lathering off and you just have four pickup trucks, this, you wouldn't-
Yeah, they're essentially large pickup trucks.
So.
Yeah, okay. I think the gross vehicle weight, anybody can have four large pickup trucks, anybody could have one by right, anybody could have one large, you can put a bucket truck in there if you wanted to.
Yeah.
One.
Right.
One. So it's not, I don't think we're expanding in any way beyond the current conditions, and we are restricting, um, both the number of vehicles and the size of the vehicles appropriately.
Right.
Okay.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, it would be better if that appreciated, but if we bless this request for small, for four small trucks, uh, and no parking behind a, a, they're actually better protected than they are now.
Would somebody like to walk us through the variance criteria, please? I'm conscious of the time, I'd like to move along, we do have one more application and some minutes to do.
Okay.
Laura, you wanna go through the variance, or Rick, or someone?
I'm not sure I want to on this one, sorry.
You have some issues.
I do.
Okay.
Either by-
Right.
Okay.
Rick?
Uh, there it is. The variance is not contrary to the public interest, and the fear of the ordinance is a threat. Well, we, we heard support from several neighbors, one neighbor is not in support, but, uh, on balance, it, it doesn't seem that this is, uh, a threat, the certain life, a threat to, um, public health, safety, or welfare.
But there's another leg that this has to stand on, which is must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, I'd like to discuss that briefly.
Okay. Well, the, if, if they're going, if they're going to say that there are too many trucks there now, by right, he's gotta want to park one with a big sign on it, and he can have a pickup truck that, that's what he drives to town to get his groceries, and it doesn't count.
Can have 12 pickup trucks.
12 of them, yes, he could.
By right.
By right. So, I don't know from that picture, there's a lot of trucks there, but how many of them are commercial vehicles?
Well, there will be four.
Now, there can be four.
Mm-hmm. And they're commercial vehicles of a certain size, but a commercial vehicle even of a certain size has a backup alarm and has signage on it and-
Yep, yep.
Other things.
Okay. The value of the surrounding properties are not diminished.
Well, you skipped three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I understood, it's pretty good, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure, is, does, before we move on, does everybody agree that this passes one and two?
I'm on offense about the essential character of the neighborhood.
As am I.
Yeah, I think it's got a rest on, I mean, I don't think it gets there without the conditions, um, with the gross vehicle weight condition, I think I can get there.
Good.
Okay, and, and where, where I am is, by right, he can park one monster truck there now.
Well, we, we can do that almost throughout the entire town, um, but one, you know, when you're selling a property and you know that there's a variance that allows up to four commercial vehicles, it-
That's, that's not true. You can't park a commercial vehicle in your driveway overnight.
Of course you can.
If I had a home business, I could.
Yep, yep, I have a home business, and I have established a set-
What's the hurdle for that? It doesn't apply to us, it doesn't come to us.
Is it automatic?
Doug?
Right here, here's the list.
Yeah.
First of all, on property, you're, uh, uh, you can't, well, the list is-
So it's a code enforcement issue?
Right, and if I can't find, um, some, of course, the category of use, then I can use.
Okay.
But that is a use, uh, permitted in the home occupation contract.
Considered a contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
If contractor is in excess of, um, there's a whole list of contractors, you know.
Right, right, right.
So it's a permitted accessory use in pretty much every zone, so, or every zone, so.
So anybody can park a large, monster truck is a specific thing, anyone can park a large commercial vehicle in excess of 20,000 gross vehicle weight.
With a big handle, that's it.
Right.
But if you're marketing a commer-, a property for sale, and it has a variance for up to four commercial vehicles, that, I mean, these are very nice people, their neighbors like them, and they're not upset with them for the most part. But if we grant this, and if the property's marketed for up to four commercial vehicles, that can change things.
Even if those commercial vehicles are restricted to essentially a large pickup truck?
Well, so I'm not a big understander of exactly what 20,000 GVW gets you, so, um, I don't really understand that limitation that well, but, so I, I can't really speak to that.
Do, do your biggest pickup trucks, are they class to class that in the old days, you could call that a, a one-ton pickup?
Hang on a second, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We've closed public session.
I know.
I know. So, is everybody okay asking this question of the applicant?
I'm, I'm fine to ask that, we're gonna direct-
Okay, sorry, I'm a procedure guy, please step up to the microphone. I didn't hear your whole question.
Okay, so, how old, or I'm used to thinking of pickup trucks as half-ton pickup, three-quarter ton pickup, and a one-ton pickup, typically those have tandem wheels in the back.
Sure, yes.
What, what of those three pickup, I give you, what would, how would you describe your truck?
Uh, one truck, pickup truck, one-ton, which is actually not classified as a commercial vehicle at all, it's under, it's 10,000 GVW, so it's not even a commercial vehicle, it does not have a backup alarm. Uh, the other truck is a one-ton, 10,000 GVW, which does not require backup alarm. One truck is-
Microphone's high, sorry.
Uh, one truck is the larger truck that does have the backup alarm, and that would be the only one that's required to have it. The others are classified as pickup trucks, so I would be okay with a variance of one truck with backup alarm, uh, pickup truck without, which is not a commercial vehicle. Uh, just by law, I have to call it, if, if I do business in New Hampshire, even though that is not considered a commercial vehicle by the town, DOT will make me put stickers on it if I am towing a piece of commercial equipment. So the catch is, I have to put the stickers on the door, but do I have to have backup alarms on those trucks? No. One of the trucks is the F-550 requires that.
Can you give us a sense of what 20,000 gross vehicle weight looks like?
Uh, an F-350 pickup truck, uh, is essentially, looks the same as an F-550, which is a 19,000 GVW. They add suspension in the back, it, it, the truck isn't larger by sense, it's just, I have a, a body on the back that chips will go into, but it's essentially a, a pickup truck, an F-350, uh, one-ton pickup truck.
Is how much? Is, what is the gross vehicle?
Uh, of, of my current truck, the largest I have is, is 19,000 GVW.
Is that this one over here? Cause-
The white one out at the end?
Okay. That I understand.
Okay, good, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, does everybody know what we're talking about now? It's essentially, uh, you're used to this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, okay, Anne? Okay. All right, Rick, please continue with, uh, where we are, substantial justice is done.
The benefit to the applicant should act, so outweigh the harm to the general public for other individuals. And I, I believe that to be true.
Again, I don't think it passes the test without the conditions that we're discussing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Off what I go through-
The conditions make this palatable.
Right. The value of the surrounding property is not diminished. Uh, this, this is, again, there's been no expert concern, indication one way or the other, and we're left to our own opinion. I don't think that it does, and in fact, a number of the, the supporting people believe their property has been enhanced because he is dead. So-
Laura, do you wanna weigh in on that one? Are you comfortable with, with four?
Um, I don't think a, a home business like this would diminish the value of the surrounding properties unless it were, you know, built up and taken to an extreme. I think the conditions that we would put on it would prohibit that, so-
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Well, and again, the home business isn't the issue, if you remember, vehicles-
It's a number of years, right?
Right, but with a home, if the home business had four vehicles of unlimited size, that would concern me, but if we put the limitations on that we've discussed, I think that's probably not going to affect property values nearby.
Okay, good. Liberal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Uh, unnecessary hardship means because of the special conditions to the property, uh-
I don't, I don't think we, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna read the whole thing.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you think? I mean, is there a hardship here?
Well, if he can't park it, if he, he'll have to park it someplace else, and that's a hardship, that's why he's here.
But there's nothing special about the property that-
Yeah, although I do think, I mean, I will say this property is, 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 it's a good size, it's sort of, it's an abnormal shape, but I mean, the, the size of the property relative to some of the other surrounding residences does provide additional buffer, uh, which I think provides some special conditions.
And there are other home occupations and commercial businesses that exist on Beachville Road. It's, it's a very, there's the replacement that we had, uh-
A retailer in the town.
Oh, right by the power line, we had, uh, we had to vote on something, I forget what that was. Hmm?
Farquhar.
Farquhar? Yep.
And Marquise.
Yep. Right. This stretch of it is largely single-family homes, if not exclusively, except for that one building Mr. Webb owns. Well, this is-
This is what? What is that?
Uh, looks empty.
Like a barn?
Yeah, it's a steel, it's a steel building, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a steel building. Thank you, Rick. Um, I think we're, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm taking the pulse here, I, I think we're ready for a motion, and that motion has to have some very specific conditions. One having to do with the gross vehicle weight, and the second having to do with, uh, vehicles may not be parked or stored behind the abutting properties at numbers, I wanna get this right, 103, 105, and 109 Beachville Road.
That's two, you did.
Yeah, they're all odd.
Oh, three, right.
Three, five, and nine, I believe. The three abutting properties to the, where's the rows on this thing? Do they, do they bother to give you a directional rose on here?
Look at that, look at that.
No. Yeah.
Three, is it three, five, and nine?
Yeah, to the north, the three abutting properties to the north on Beachville Road.
That is correct.
I couldn't find it.
Hang on, go ahead, Anne.
I know, I'm too familiar, it just feels like, you understand, it's not what I'm trying to do, this is a residential building, right?
Correct.
And I know, he might get this, it feels like the news is going to be changing, it may not be this close with the nation, and I'm watching, it's probably not over, the president's building, so the part-time business, it's not ideal, it's not like-
It's actually rural, it's not, it's not residential, it's rural, which has by nature farm uses of other, other than resi-, has uses other than residential.
Is it more than that, or is it rural?
This is not into a neighborhood of single-family, one acre, that would be, I think, a very different sort of thing. Um, yeah, I think we all share some reservations, Anne, on this, uh, that are laid in my case, and I think several others, only by the conditions that we're gonna place on this. Motion? Laura, do you wanna do it, or Rick, or Kevin?
No, I don't wanna make the motion.
Kevin, do you wanna make the motion, or would you rather not?
Um, yeah, I, I'm still working through this one.
We may not get a motion, we may not get a second, so let's, let's give it a try.
All right. I move to approve the request for a variance to allow four commercial vehicles parked at the site, with the provision that these vehicles will last at least, uh, 20,000- the site with the provision that these vehicles will last at least 20,000 pounds gross weight...
Gross vehicle weight, GBW.
GBW.
GB, gross vehicle weight.
And no vehicles will be parked behind the three mitigation parties.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Sorry, fails three to two.
What did you say, Laura?
Thank you very much, everybody who's come out.
I'm sorry.
They're perfectly accurate, so we can decide about what we find if they're not on the vehicles.
That is not for us to say. We can only say what we do on the variance. I'm not sure even what the definition of a commercial vehicle is. I'll ask you to speak with Doug about that outside. Moving on, um, the final application, and for this application Esther's going to be voting instead of Anne, but Anne, you can stay for the discussion. The application of Phillips Exeter Academy for a special exception for Article Four, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article Five, Section 5.2, to permit a private school use, and a variance from Article Four, Section 4.3, Schedule II, density and, I should get paid overtime for reading this stuff. Dimensional, dimensional regulations, eighty-three residential, I have no idea what that means, to permit the proposed construction of a new building which will exceed the maximum height requirement in the R2, single-family residential zoning district. Subject property is located on Front Street, Tax Mac Parcel, parcel seventy-two dash two oh nine, site of the former Fisher Theater Building. This is case twenty dash twelve. Safe to assume the applicant is with us this evening.
It looks like her either.
I'm not shocked.
Now, now, there are actually a few requests, one for a variance and one for...
Correct. And I don't understand the nature of the special exception, but we'll get there.
All right. It tells us it's an R2 area and...
Yeah, but it's already a, you, the use is already there.
We do this every time.
Right. We have to go through that.
Yeah.
Right? And...
It's like with Riverwood, adding something to the main use that requires a special exception.
Then probably...
By the way, y'all get the prize for the biggest piece of paper that will come into my home and fit on my, it would actually fit on my...
Table?
Kitchen counter.
I, I knocked a few things off.
I did knock them off and opening it.
Guy has to go to the floor, and the tough part, Laura, is that's any good effort you want out of it.
I don't do that anymore. Please introduce yourself, let's get going.
Thank you. Um, my name is Heather Taylor, and I am the campus planner and architect at Phillips Exeter Academy, and I am thrilled to have here with us tonight a large team. Our team that includes, um, Mark Layton, the director of facilities for Phillips Exeter Academy. We have also with us, um, from SLAM Collaborative, our architects. We have Jeff Gaunt and Neil Martin. And we also have, um, from Altus Engineering, who is a longtime trusted advisor, um, as a civil engineer.
Hey, Jeff, who are you?
Jeff Clifford and Corey Belden. So we are here tonight, as you, um, so read, for the special exception application, and as well for the height variance for a new dormitory building. Um, the dormitory, the project, uh, is located on Front Street.
Can you bring the mic with you?
Sure.
Yeah, take the mic with you.
Okay.
For our home audience.
Okay. Um, and I don't know if they can, no, they probably can see. Um, so this is right at the intersection. This is Tan Lane, this is Front Street, this is just west of the, the lawn, the chapel. This is Front, um, Front Street Dorm and Dow House, and the lawn between, and you know, the, um, Evergreens and Fisher Theater. This is, as you all may recall, a couple of years ago, we finished the new center, the Goell Center for Theater and Dance, that is south of Court Street, and Fisher Theater has sat vacant, um, as a storage building essentially since. Um, so this is the location, and what we're looking to do, we're proposing, um, this is, again, a view of the existing condition, and what we are proposing is to put, uh, this, it's a sixty-bed dorm with five faculty apartments and, um, some academic space in the lower level. Um, the location works to our advantage because we can make it, our design team has worked very hard, and they'll describe this, to make this look like a two-story building. Um, it's really a two-story building, fronting Front Street, but because the grade falls off, we have access on the lower level to an academic space that then connects over a little bridge to our science building. So the reason, and the other thing that we're excited about this project, is that we actually get to incorporate Dow Barn that exists right now behind Dow House. It's an old barn, and we're going to build a new foundation and move it slightly, slightly to the east and north, um, and incorporate it into the building as two faculty apartments. Um, so we get to reuse and, um, renew an existing historic building, um, as well then add this space. Why are we building a dorm? We are not changing, increasing our enrollment, and we are not increasing our boarding student population because of this. In 2018, um, we had an over enrollment, and what it highlighted is that we have a shortage of beds. We currently have eight hundred and thirty-six beds, sort of adequate beds on campus. Um, we really feel that we need eight fifty is the goal, um, to deal with this fluctuation that goes up and down. We also, over the course of past years, and looking forward in the next ten years, we are going to continue to renovate a number of the larger brick dorms, and every time we renovate a building, we lose up to five beds, because we double the size of bathrooms when we add ADA requirements, et cetera. So additionally, we have some wood house dorms that we would like to repurpose for other uses, and so in order to do that, this dorm will accommodate that, that number. That's what the, that's what this is all about. Um, the location, again, is reusing what's already a developed site of, which currently has a Butler Building on it that was built in nineteen seventy-two. Um, and it's an ideal location because we already have two small dorms in this area, but this will add to create, we have pockets of communities of the students living, and this will help sort of anchor that and activate that, this...
What are the two existing dorms?
The two existing dorms are Dow House and Front Street Dorm.
And no changes are planned to either of those structures, other than the barn on Dow?
No changes here, and no changes here. Dow is just picking up and moving.
The barn?
And, yes.
Okay. But the two buildings on Front Street will not be changed?
They will not be changed. As a part of this, we will restore, um, there's a historic fence, and we'll go, we are in front of HTC, actually later this week, and we'll talk about, talk about that, but yes, there are no changes to those dorms. And in terms of timing of this, we are not looking, um, to build this immediately. Right now, we are approved to go through design development, which is the phase that we're in, and we've wanted to go through permitting to make sure that we open any issues and we accommodate those so that we're poised to go forward when funding is in place. So this is a project we have to fundraise for, or, you know, it's, we're putting funding together, but it may not happen right away. So we just wanted to let you know, it's not like we're on your market set, though. We've got a lot of money to raise before we do this. Um, but there's a lot more to describe, and I'm going to pass it on to Jeff Gaunt to talk about the project and the site, all the details. And you probably need it higher.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Gaunt. I'm an architect with the SLAM Collaborative Architecture Firm, and we were hired to work with the academy on this student, new student dormitory project. Um, as Ms. Taylor said, it's very important to this, to the academy, uh, to build these sixty beds and five faculty apartments for them to achieve their mission, especially as it relates to improving the safety and accessibility of all of the, the dorms on campus. So this new dorm will help to facilitate all of those renovations.
Sorry about the noise.
That's okay. Uh, we worked as a design team, uh, with the academy very closely to try to, uh, achieve a design that incorporated those program, uh, programmatic aspects, the sixty beds and the five, uh, faculty apartments in as, as most efficient a footprint as possible. We are trying to keep very close to the, the footprint of the existing, um, Fisher Theater that Ms. Taylor, I'll move this over here just so that you can kind of see the existing site plan along with the new. So, um, we have to the north and on the west sides, tried to maintain the face of the existing building so that we're not encroaching any further to the north nor to the west. Um, you know, on the north side, there's a nice stream bed there, uh, and on the west is the one abutter for this project. Everything to the east of the project is academy property and uses, um, and then to the south are the two dorms that Ms. Taylor described. And so, um, again, the north and, and west sides are similar to what the existing building, uh, had, and then we have taken the Dow Barn, and we're going to pick that Dow Barn up and move it and incorporate it into the new dormitory, which is kind of exciting for us because we're able to kind of give a new, uh, an existing old barn a new life, uh, and that will become faculty apartments. Uh, along that west side where the abutter is, we've maintained the drive. Um, there is ingress and egress along the same, uh, existing drive. Um, we've been able to achieve the twelve parking spaces along that west side. There are two parking spaces for each faculty apartment, and so, uh, we've got five faculty apartments in the new dorm plus the one faculty apartment of the existing Dow House. So that's six apartments altogether, which is twelve parking spaces, and they all exist on that west side. So the west side adjacent to the abutter is really pretty quiet. It's mostly just faculty, uh, faculty use. Everything related to the students will happen kind of to the east. Everything, you know, academically, uh, and, and related to the, the campus is going to the east. So as we come in and we talk about, uh, the dormitory entries, the main entry for the student, students is right off the southern facade, and really more towards the eastern side of that facade, just to kind of keep all that circulation away from the abutter. Um, there's a very clear entrance in here. And then as we move around the building, um, on the east side, we've tried to incorporate a new, uh, stairway that can bring the students from that kind of mean green space between the dorms, uh, down to the, to the north as a means for a new student circulation. So kind of helping that student circulation on campus. Again, everything kind of flowing to the east and to the students, um, to where the students will be occupying most of their day. On the east side, relative to the footprint, we were able to kind of carve out a little space, uh, from the existing footprint that, that brings light in down to the lower level, and I'll show you in a minute the plan down there, but there's a academic space down there. So by carving that away a little bit, we're actually able to bring natural light down into that space. And then on the north side, there is another entry egress for the students, um, that, on the lower level, that will allow them to kind of come in from that side of the campus, but it's still kind of all directed towards the east side. Um, again, in terms of this, this drive access, we did have conversations with the fire department as well as the building department and, and with the planner, town planner, and they were very helpful in helping us to kind of figure out exactly what would work best in terms of their accessibility. The fire department is able to pull their fire engine in and kind of turn in this first parking lot and allow the ladder truck to go by and park down in this, this lower parking lot to be able to fight the fire, and so they were all very pleased with that layout and, and the way that functioned in terms of their abilities to, to utilize the site. As far as landscape goes, um, you know, there will be some re, um, regrading, not, not a lot of regrading, but just kind of replanting of plants along the front of the south elevation, and you'll see that in the renderings shortly. Um, but, you know, just as a term, you know, kind of giving some softness to the, to elevations as well as some new pathways that will help students kind of identify where they're going and allow for a nice green space, uh, for student activities. I'm going to talk a little bit about the building plans, if there aren't any questions.
No, I just want to mention that the specific reason that this application is before the zoning board of adjustment has to do with the height variance, and I'd really appreciate if we could focus on exactly the, uh, on the height of the building.
Why we, we have two...
Right. See, that's all we're voting on.
Well, two of...
We're, yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah. I felt that, or we thought that it would be helpful just to have...
No, it is, and I appreciate it, and I'm not trying to cut you off, it's just that...
It's getting late. I get you.
Yeah, and, and these are really not issues that are before the zoning board. There are plenty of other boards that we run away in, um...
Okay. Um, well, one of the things I do want to just mention real...
That ruins your evening.
No, 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 no. I, I agree with you, I hear you, um, and we will get to the height.
You got to enjoy the, uh... They got to enjoy debating logging trucks.
Um, as I mentioned, we, we worked really hard as a team to try to create a very efficient plan, and one of the things that we worked real hard on was to take from the third floor, this is the third floor plan, you can see in the plan that, um, you know, it's mostly dorm rooms and the faculty apartments are off to the end, but on this third floor, we really, we worked hard to try to get all of the dorm beds out of this front area. This is the south facade that's facing Front Street, and the goal there was to try to reduce the scale as much as possible and really have the building fit well within the context. And as far as height goes, you know, try to really minimize that, the impact, um, especially on that Front Street side where the public is really going to be most impacted, so...
Ms. Taylor had a very useful sort of, uh, elevation up earlier. I wonder if you could put that place in one of the...
I'm going to actually pass the microphone back to a colleague, Neil Martin, and, and he's going to...
You're coming from Front Street? Yeah, that's a very useful view to have in mind there. Thank you.
I'm Neil Martin.
You got to have the, you got to have the mic.
My name's Neil Martin.
I'm sorry if I, if I, if I pushed you.
Um, I'm with the architects, the SLAM Collaborative, and part of the team. So as you can see in the rendering here, um, the team worked, we all worked very hard on the, the view with two of the buildings in front, the Dow House and the Front Street Dorm, which are really jewels in the town when you think about it. And the, the appearance that we have here is really that of a two-story, uh, building with two equal gables, to sort of give homage to the two sort of pieces, and the, the open quad that's here as well. The proposal, you'll also see, we repair this historic fence that's in the documents that you have as well. So we care greatly about this. We are asking for the variance of, uh, the front, um, piece that's in your documents. I believe it's about five feet or so, but the reality of it is that that's just above that ridge point that's there. So the, the building is also set back pretty significantly from the street, and we feel blends in very nicely with, with both buildings as well. I hope you agree. Um, sorry?
What is the elevation of what we're looking at? Because of the, uh, the variance?
Yes. So the, uh, do we have the diagram? There you go. So we have a diagram of that here, where, um, the max zoning height is thirty-five feet, which is here, and we are at the max ridge at forty-five feet. Note that the, the images that you're looking at, that we're looking for relief on, is a sloped roof that goes back in the actual view, so that's the actual relief that we're seeking to be today.
Oh, okay. So you're saying that the, the crown of the student pickup stores is...
Correct.
Is, what's the elevation of the top of that?
That is? That is...
Because it varies between the two. And this, it looks lower, and this one, it looks the same.
Right.
45 feet. So it's the same height as the ridge behind.
No. This is, these points here are 38.
Ah.
This is at 45. And again, that's from the average grade. And because of the fact that Ms. Taylor mentioned the grade slows down, so the average grade is actually from the Front Street side. And so the impact, the sort of perceived elevation from Front Street is actually about four feet less than what the overall height is based on the zoning requirement.
Because you're three stories in the front, four in the back.
Yeah. It's visually two, and these two triangles over the 35 and then the slope piece that
goes back in your perception.
Okay. So a height variance is a height variance is a height variance. And plans change. This current instantiation, the massing, is quite minimal, even though the height variance...
Correct.
If we give you a height variance, the massing could change.
So the design you're seeing is what's proposed, which would be constructed without any changes?
So the variance would say the plan as proposed?
Correct.
Okay. And you understand?
Yes, absolutely. And to just go a little further, you'll see that in the other parts of the building, because you don't just see this building from all places, but, you know, as we move forward in the design of not just the front, we've made every attempt to break down the scale of this building. So we think of it as, you know, the Dow barn, which is one piece, there's the front house, which is this. This is classic New England vernacular. We have a middle house and a back house that's here, and you can begin to see. And I should mention too that the way we're treating the Dow barn, even though it's not part of the variance, it's a very sensitive piece, we're letting it stand on its own as a jewel in the historic, in the neighborhood. So the entire sort of development is done in a way that is sensibly done as possible.
And I actually appreciate the fact that you've not thrown another brick forearm back there.
It's a great point, actually.
It actually sort of echoes Dow House in particular.
It really does. And the team has worked so diligently on even the paint colors. And you'll notice that the vermilion patterns that we have here is reflecting the proportions of the adjacent buildings. If you look at the spirit of these two buildings adjacent to us here, and this is very pleasing because they're vertical Victorian type of windows, we're retaining that spirit within the architecture. This is your town. This is an extremely important building that fits especially here.
Can I ask about the materials? I noticed also and appreciated that it wasn't a massive brick building, but is anticipated?
So what we anticipate is that the, all facades, primary facades in this view are hardy plank, which is like a siding material. For the barn itself, we're looking at replacing some of the existing wood there where we can to repair it as much as we possibly can for feasibility to keep it going in the right direction. I need to show you the other views because they're important so we can answer this the correct way. You can also see just a bit of a close-up here on the front view in our renderings. You can begin to see those proportions that I mentioned, the scale and articulation, breaking this down in a very pleasing way. We're not competing with the barn because it is the jewel within your town. Now, these are a few other views. That's the entry view. You can see the clapboard and the layout of some of the details that are so critical in pulling this off. And I think to credit the team endlessly, we've worked very diligently. This view is taken from the side, sort of facing from the, as you approach, there's a bridge here. You're seeing the lowest floor and that first floor classroom piece that Jeff had mentioned.
From Front Street.
And again, all of this is clapboard here. It's hardy plank. This is actually made up of a one-story piece, which is a combination of flat stock and then hardy plank. And at the base, we have brick on this side. This is an homage to home, large industrial buildings that sit on the riverfront, you know, in the wrong way to help them give them some sense of foundation.
Make out, I'm sorry with the mask, it's a little hard. What is the material?
So this is, this is brick.
Oh, brick.
And that would be clapboard. And this above here is rubberized slate. So you'll see that on those existing buildings, this slate there now, we're not doing actual slate, but a slate that matches that as closely as we can.
Very nice.
You said the footprint is essentially identical to the existing Fisher Theater.
Could you actually, I noticed behind, I think it's behind the site location map, there's an existing view, I think?
I'm not sure.
On the bottom, behind the site location board.
This one here?
Yeah. I'm wondering if there's a view, the existing context.
Well...
I'm wondering if that shows the Fisher Theater.
Yeah, it does, actually. Let me bring this closer here.
The theater is actually very difficult to see. From Front Street, you really can't see it.
In that...
Right. What you see right now is you'll see some landscaping there. Here are the two buildings. And this is made of a metal panel in this location.
And could you, I think it's in the application, but could, for context, could you just go through the existing height versus, Fisher Theater versus this proposed height?
Would you like to take that, the existing versus new?
So we were just talking about the...
Sorry, could you use the...
The peak runs the other way.
Right. The peak runs the other way, but the existing peak is 44.6, sort of from, 44 feet, 6 inches from a sort of perceived height that you see. But that's the peak. So instead of being a single peak, you know, it will come across at essentially the same.
Interesting. And is there, I don't know if this is just semantics, but you talked in the application, you talked about 45 feet above average grade versus mean grade? Is that, are you, I just want to make sure I...
They're the same.
An apples-to-apples comparison.
They're the same thing. The zoning requirements reference mean grade. And in our industry, we often call it average grade, so apologize.
Same calculation.
Same thing, yeah.
Same calculation for both buildings?
Yes.
We just had a case where the building height was at issue, and so we're being more specific now.
This one isn't full chat.
Yes, which is a good thing.
Which is a good thing.
I wanted to know the size, how many square feet of finished area. It's not mentioned anywhere, and it's a big building, and I think it should be stated in part of the application.
44 feet?
Yes.
It's 42,000 square feet.
And that's all levels?
That's all, yeah, the entire building.
And could you, for me, it's really helpful to know how that compares with the only point of reference I have, which is the Fisher Theater. Do you have a...
So the, right, so the footprint of the building or the lower level, well, that's not the lower level there, but the lowest level is the largest level that has the academic space in it. That's 13,700. The existing Fisher Theater was 12,000.
Interesting.
Could you gain your bar?
But we have included the barn, and the existing Fisher Theater did not include the barn.
That's about the size, probably.
It's about 1,200 each floor.
You did.
And then on the southern side of the footprint, we did extend over the existing a little bit, but we're still 200 feet from the curb.
So I guess what makes me here is the progress, one certain difference, maybe not two, but then there's another certain difference. And with establishing the total square foot of the footprint, square, or feet of the footprint, can you convince the noticating there?
To what's currently proposed?
I would, Rick, I appreciate that, but I would argue that this is a height variance, not a size variance. And I'd be much more concerned with the width of the project than I would be the square footage of it.
Okay. But if they try to maintain the same capacity, they have to increase the size of the footprint because they're going to reuse that.
That's very true. They lose a story, the building would be much larger.
Make it four times that size.
By 13,000 square foot per floor, approximately.
It's a, you know, the floor is very, the largest floor is 13,000.
Okay. Only one on the mic at a time.
So for me, the side of the footprint is relevant, and also when you get to the additional, the other...
Oh, the use, the special exception?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman, do you mind if I, can I address some...
Not at all, please. Introduce yourself.
Mark Layden, Director of Facilities at the Academy. Just to answer that comment, we actually restricted on at least three sides by the footprint. So the back, the north side, is the wetland. We don't want to go any further than the existing footprint because of the wetland setback. So we're not, that's, we're restricting ourselves because of that. On the west is the property lines. We have a driveway that we have to, we have an access drive that we have to meet the extra fire department requirements. On the east, we have a utility yard that we can't, we don't want to move, it's too expensive. So we're locked in there. Then on the south, it's the historic district line that we're trying to keep as our boundary. So the footprint, we're pretty much, we've maximized what we have. So if we were not successful today with the height variance, then we'd probably go to a different style of architecture, more of a flat roof style or something like that. Because the program is very important to us to have the number of beds, the apartment, and the program. So we would probably, we would go, we wouldn't look at increasing the footprint, we'll look at more changing the architecture to get below the height. But that's why we feel extremely important of the approach, that it fits with the surrounding buildings, and that's why we're asking for the variance.
Okay. But the structure that you've got doesn't have a straight side. And so if you, if you took all the insides out, maybe you'd get more square feet of footprint.
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, it doesn't gain us. So if you look at the program, we have, you know, we have the student beds, we have the apartments. You're right, we could, we could increase the square footage to try to straighten it out and that sort of thing, but...
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you to promise not to do that.
Well, can I ask you a question, Rick? Sorry to sort of jump in here. I didn't catch all of your initial question, but is your concern just not having a clear, you know, clear statement of the footprint or of the area? Because I mean, it is in the plans.
So if we say as presented, then we're really talking...
Yeah, just because I looked, it's hard because they're giant.
They can tweak, but they can't double.
But they have presented a plan with a 13,690-foot square foot footprint.
Okay. Now, we are taking a safe, that is the footprint of the existing structure.
Very close to it. You said 12...
That's the new structure.
12,000 something.
That's the new structure that I just...
Yeah, and the Fisher's 12, 12-something, so they're...
The barn.
Less, no, the existing, existing building that's there now.
Yeah.
Right, is 12,000 something.
Right. But their total structure is bigger than by Front Street and the barn.
Yeah.
The footprint's bigger because we're incorporating Dow barn into the, into the proposed project.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a reason why you're three inches off of the historic district setback line?
Well, to stay out of the, stay out of the historic district setback is what we're pushing for, right? We're targeting.
Three, three...
It's the HDC line, I mean, that building...
Is that an asset to your market?
It's really, really...
We're going to be really accurate with the contractor.
If you've got a window that opens, it's going to be in the HDC.
So we are going in...
That window's going to have to have a...
As Ms. Taylor mentioned, we are going to the HDC on Thursday because of the Dow barn.
Can we remind the...
Yeah, did, 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 did. But Dow barn is in it.
Dow barn is in the historic district, yes.
Materials, et cetera.
Yeah. Because we're, we're changing parts of it and we're moving it.
Okay. Okeydoke. Do you have more for us?
Is there any else?
We have another question.
Are you going to go through the special exception application first? Does that have to process?
Yes.
Okay.
Always do special exception before the... I appreciate it. I would imagine, that's the end of your presentation as far as the special exception is concerned?
Yes.
Okay. Open it up for the public. Anybody would like to comment, ask a question?
We need to make sure there's nobody...
Crickets? Crickets? Okay. Questions for the applicant, members of the board? Any questions before we close public session and go to deliberation? This is strictly the special exception at this point, which is Article 4, 4.2, Section 1, blah, 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 permit a private school use. I don't think we need to go through this. This is pretty much a formality that we go through every time.
I can go through it quickly if you...
Go ahead, if you don't mind, Mr. Box.
The use is permitted special exception, proposed private school use is permitted under Section 4.2, Schedule 1. The use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated, the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected. You know, this is within an existing campus. They clearly cited it in a way to make it consistent with the campus. And, you know, and so I believe this criteria is met.
Yep.
The proposed use will be compatible with the zone district in adjoining post-1972 development where it's located. This is the one that never really makes any sense, but as I understand it, it is, you know, it's compatible with the underlying zoning. It is in a residential zone, use is free by special exception, and it's, you know, it's part of the campus, and it's consistent with the other buildings in the campus and specifically in the immediate surrounding area.
And frankly, the use is going to be residential for dormitory use is actually more appropriate than the existing.
Yeah. And there will be classrooms, but it is still, you know, it is, it's still appropriate for the area. Adequate landscaping and screening will be provided. The applicant notes it is going to go to planning board review, but I think they've also shown it'll be citing of the building itself, that the landscaping is appropriate and adequate for the proposal. The, there's adequate Austrian parking and loading for ingress and egress. Again, that's not really applicable here given the private school use, but they have indicated how the, you know, how the pedestrian flow and other traffic flow is going to occur. And they met with, they provided traffic generation memorandum, and they met with the town planner as well.
And they've not asked for parking relief? So I would assume that they have sufficient parking for the residents, for the faculty and housing that's going to be there?
Discuss the prior access, so I'm good with that.
The use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district. That is true with the exception of the height variance, which we will...
The use conforms.
That the use conforms, yeah.
Great. That's it?
And, yeah, and the other, they have no need, they will be getting site plan review. So, and then it will not adversely affect the letting of nearby property values. Again, it's consistent with the private school use already in existence. There'll be no infatuation surrounding property values.
Agreed. Somebody like to make a motion on the special exception?
I will move to grant the special, the special exception to permit private school use. Yeah, I just want that sufficient.
Yep, that's sufficient. Second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Special exception passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll move on to the variance for the height. Okay. We certainly have heard the presentation. Okay, we certainly have heard the presentation on the height variance. Are there any questions, since we're back into public session? Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
Mine were all answered.
Terrific. I will again open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public, either online or in person, who would like to speak to the height variance request? We're waiting an appropriate period of time to see if somebody's online. Hearing none, I'll close the public session and move to deliberations. So, we have a variance on height for the structure on Front Street. Specific relief being sought is roughly five feet?
Hmm, it's my luck.
Yeah, either Rick or I, I got these things. Can you do the scaled down version next time, guys, please? So maximum ridge height is forty-five, maximum zoning height is thirty-five, so it's roughly ten foot of relief being sought.
So I appreciate the way they oriented the side that faces the town as opposed to the interior of the campus, to scale it in a way that has minimal effect and appears more like a two-story building, I think, considering...
Could you put that south elevation up, please, again, the Front Street elevation?
Considering the, that they are proposing a significant building with a lot of square footage, I think they did a very nice job of scaling it to have a minimal mass appearance from...
Excellent, thank you, sir.
From the public side, so, and it's a very attractive building and that also very much helps. So with the historic barn and all that, I think it's going to make a nice addition and it won't appear overbearing.
Oh, you agree? I don't know exactly what the setback is from Front Street, but it's fairly significant. Hundred and fifty foot?
A little over two hundred.
Little over two hundred?
Yeah.
Little over two hundred, exactly to the zone, the HDC line?
And I know it's a different layout, but it is setback, I think, slightly farther than the Fisher Theater. It's roughly in the same footprint and it is very close to the existing height, which, you know, that I think we've all seen, just from looking at that building, that just the topography and the layout from Front Street really, you know, diminishes the visual mass of the building.
Well, the, the existing building is peak on.
Yeah.
Right, so you're, you're just seeing a smaller...
No, understood, but even, you know, I understand that, it's a different, yeah.
It's also intensely empty, so it's...
It is intensely, it is not a loss, but...
They told us the height of the existing building is, the peak is slightly higher than the forty-five, forty-six?
Forty-four.
Slightly lower.
Six inches.
Forty-four.
Forty-four and a half now.
So it's approximately, the peak of the existing building is approximately the variance that's being reported here. But that's peak on where this is ridge on, so we're...
But I think just looking at the, I mean, Fisher Theater has always been in my, sort of surprisingly, you know, unobtrusive from Front Street.
Yeah, it actually is. It's also incredibly unexeter.
Which is why it's good that it's unobtrusive.
It is actually a building that would otherwise stand out, I think, and the fact that it doesn't speaks to...
Untown, un-school.
The layout of that area, the topography of that area.
The last steel building we had was out, oh, never mind, it was over there, finally got torn down. I appreciate the effort that's gone into the design of the building and the fact that the material's being chosen. Party board's good stuff. I appreciate the materials being chosen to echo Dow House. Any other comments from the board or questions? Esther, you good, Rick?
Yeah.
Will somebody like to go through the variance criteria? I think, given a project of this scale, it's appropriate to do that.
Um, I can do that, I guess. Okay. One and two. The variance is not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed, so I don't think it is in conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. I don't think it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights, and I don't think it will result in any harm to the general public. So I think it meets that criteria rather nicely. Those two.
Rick, do you have a question about...
Well, I want to add that the existing structure is significantly more than the zoning height and what they're asking for is really quite...
What with the existing building, correct?
Agreed.
Okay.
So number three, substantial justice is done. I think I already covered that one.
No.
Benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public, and I don't think there is any harm to the general public with this...
Certainly no evidence presented here.
With this application, particularly, you know, the attempts to stay within the existing footprint, minimize any view impact from Front Street, and so forth. The values of surround, surrounding properties are not diminished. They own most of the surrounding properties. The one of Butter, I don't think is, I think would probably benefit from the transition from Fisher Theater to this very nice building. So I'm not worried about that as a valuation person, so unless anybody else has any concerns, we can move on.
Yep.
Literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship and, I guess I can go through the whole thing. Because the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose, the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application. And I think this is a very unique use and unique property within Exeter that already has substantial buildings, historic buildings that are pretty large and exceed the height, the height requirements already. It will fit right in with all of that.
If I can just add, you know, the purpose of height restrictions is to prevent, you know, undo massing, shading of other buildings, and in this case, both because it's surrounded by other school, you know, properties and uses, that, that impact is very lessened. Plus the fact that it, you know, the, again, the elevation change reduces the perceived height from the vantage point that most people are going to see the building.
Good points. And the proposed use is a reasonable one, which I think it certainly is and is in keeping with the existing uses on the property, so...
Thank you, Laura. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the variance for height to, as presented within the application.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go raise your money.
Thank you very much.
Nadia, promise to get those trailers gone.
Yeah.
Can we talk trailers, please?
Trailers are nice.
Trailers are hideous. Can anybody tell me what Dow House used to be after it was a home? Was Exeter Pediatrics before they moved out to the hospital?
Is that right?
As a newborn, I had my first examination.
Oh.
Dr. Tuttle.
I know that, huh?
Thank you for leaving Eric at the office.
All right, everybody, we're not done yet.
Disruptive, this way.
So we have two more things. We have approval of minutes and election of, everybody's favorite, election of officers. I volunteer, everybody but... So, let's see. We're going to start with the January twenty-one minutes. That would be me, Rick, Laura, Kevin, and Esther. I did not find, I did not read it in incredible detail, but I did not find anything in there that bothered me.
I did not either, and I read it, probably with even less detail, but it seems good.
I didn't either.
Kevin, Esther, Rick?
No, I had no comments.
What good to me?
Motion to accept the meeting of the minutes of January twenty-first meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
In fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting one twenty-one approved, five, whatever it is, approved, minutes are approved, I don't know what count. We have the minutes of the February eighteenth board meeting. That would be Bob, Rick, Laura, and Esther are voting on this one. Again, my glance at it did not turn off any problems, but I did not read it in excruciating detail, I will admit. She's so good at this stuff.
She really is fabulous. Joanne?
Joanne's so good at this stuff. Joanna?
Joanna.
Huh? Thank you, Joanna.
Yes. You make our, our work so much easier. So I would move to accept them.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. February eighteenth approved. July twenty-one, I was not here.
You just spoke out on that one? No, you were there, okay, nevermind.
I was not here. July twenty-one would be Rick, Laura, Kevin, Esther, and Ann are the, are voting on the minutes of July twenty-one.
Again, I didn't find anything that I had a problem with.
You did it right. I have one thing I want to change and then I just started in the voting room.
Fair enough.
You argued with yourself and you lost.
Yes.
That sounds like...
No, he also won, because he argued with himself and he won and he lost.
I didn't have any comments.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Minutes approved. Election of officers, traditionally, once a year, usually at the June or July meeting.
May.
We approve or may, we elect the chair, vice chair, and clerk for the coming year. Only full members can serve in that capacity, not alternates, but you are welcome, I believe, to vote. Alternates can vote on officers, but cannot participate as an officer. That's like you can serve in the military at eighteen, but you can't drink. So, I have not prepared for this at all. At present, Joanne is the chair, I'm the vice chair, and Rick is the clerk, and there's usually some turnover in that capacity. The candidates, the full-time members are Laura, Joanne...
Excuse me.
Bob, Rick, and Kevin. Am I correct? Is there any other?
Nope, there's five.
Is that right? Barb, just the five of us, right?
Yeah, I think that's it.
So...
Has anybody gotten any indication from Joanne about her ability to continue to serve as chair or any other officer?
Or you?
Or any other capacity? So she's okay with whatever, as far as her...
How long is Joanne doing?
She one year or two years?
This is her first year.
Her first year.
Traditionally, one year.
Second year ago.
Yeah.
What's that?
Second year ago.
Sure, second year as a member, she became chair. Right, is that what you're saying? Yeah.
I think she's been a member at least three years, because, but anyway, whatever. She, I don't want to settle her with anything that she...
No, I think it's unfair to elect somebody in absentia, except you, I haven't liked you in absentia.
Well, you did, actually, Bob.
No, no, we had your permission.
No.
Oh, no, we didn't.
I was on vacation, I had no idea.
Well, at the same time, we don't have any sense, I mean, if she wants to continue, whether she wants to continue or not.
Kevin, may I ask as to your ability and interest in serving as an officer?
My concern remains the same, which is that I just missed so many meetings. I've been pretty good the last few, but I had actually reached out to Joanne, I haven't heard back, and to talk about swapping, maybe becoming an alternate and swapping out. I just, I, I just feel like I'm not present enough.
Well, you're, I don't know where your, when your term expires, we can figure that out, or maybe you should stay with your full-time membership status until your term expires. And if you're not here, we have, we have good alternatives. But as far as serving as an officer is concerned, so that really takes it down to Laura, Bob, and Rick.
It's been a while since you were chair, would you entertain redoing, resuming that? Or retaking?
The other possibility is to leave it exactly as it is, because Joanne has really only served six months.
True.
And let her continue to be chair, and if she comes back during that period and is able to serve successfully during that period, I think she deserves it. So I would suggest that we leave the three of us as it is for another year, and if Joanne's unable to come back, either Rick or I are able to, to chair the meetings. Are you okay with that?
I agree, good idea.
Excellent.
I would make a motion that we retain the existing candidates with Joanna's chair, Bob's vice chair, and Rick's clerk for another year.
Aye.
Great. Comment, discussion?
I'm in favor.
I think it makes sense.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Here we go.
Bam!
Motion to adjourn?
What's that?
Motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We out. Thank you to...